Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening for our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you, or no, not Connie. It's Wendy. Could you please call the roll?
Bray.
Here.
Cheatham.
Here.
Lurick.
Here.
Mansfield.
Here.
Ortega.
Yes.
Stevens.
Here.
Black.
Here. If you'd please stand for the pledge of allegiance, after which, if you'd remain standing, the invocation will be offered by Pastor Jonathan Dinger from representing the Grace Lutheran Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for the opportunity. Let's bow our heads. Gracious Lord God, we give you thanks for the privilege of serving you in this great country, for the freedoms that we enjoy, for the liberty which was hard fought and won for us all. As we stand here in this season of spring, we see the turning of the seasons, we rejoice in the warmth and the budding of the flowers, all signs of your gracious hand as the author and giver of life. Lord, this next week, we'll celebrate your passion. We thank you, Lord, that you were so deeply passionate for us to come. And so, we pray for passion for these who serve us as elected leaders. Grant them wisdom, compassion, and kindness. Guide and direct them. And keep us safe, Lord, as we pray for peace around the world and for safety here in our nation. We pray this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We'll move to agenda item three is a consent agenda. The following businesses may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the clarification in regular council meeting of February 17, 2022. B, material claims. Council may wish to consider material claims for the time of period of March 12, 2022 through March 31, 2022. C, animal shelter advisory board appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Sharon Engel to serve as a member of the Animal Shelter Advisory Board, representing Banach Humane Society. Sharon's term will begin April 21, 2022, and will expire April 21, 2024. D, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Dr. Grace Jory to serve as a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, feeling a vacancy. Dr. Jory's term will begin April 8, 2021, and will expire July 16, 2023. E, child passenger safety annual grant request, Police Department. Council may wish to approve the request by Police Department to apply for an Idaho Transportation Department ITD FY 23, 2023 Idaho Child Passenger Safety Grant in the amount of $15,487. And if awarded, allow acceptance of the grant and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents related to the grant, subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor.
Council President Cheatham.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of agenda item number three, the consent agenda items A, C, D, and E, excluding B, per Councilman Bray's request.
Second.
We have a motion by Council President Cheatham and a second by Lurick. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham.
Yes.
Lurick.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Mansfield.
Yes.
Ortega.
Yes.
Stevens.
Yes.
Thank you. We have agenda item B on the still outstanding council. What do you, what would you like to do with that?
I just, I don't feel like I can vote for this because, and that's the only way I can vote against it, is to pull it out. Because I just don't have enough detail. Getting a financial report 11 of the day that we are supposed to go over it and all the pages and everything, it doesn't give me a chance to go through it and to talk to other people. So I just don't feel like, for me, my due diligence can be exercised, so I have to vote against it.
Okay.
And for me, last meeting when this was pulled out, Councilman Cheatham, you indicated that because four sets of eyes look at theoretically every number, you feel safe. And that really, my concern isn't that we have staff who are embezzling or defrauding or any of that. My issue has nothing to do with staff. My issue is that if appropriate professional policies and practices are in place and they are followed, which we know from our last CFO is not the case in Pocatello, then having more people look at numbers doesn't fix anything. It's not about how many people look at a number, it's about within what parameters that are understood by everyone across the board, within what parameters are they functioning? And we know, regardless of where a person might be in their philosophy, many, many citizens believe that, and have for years, that government at all levels is, I mean, it's renowned for not running as efficiently and effectively financially as it could. I mean, from the time I was, you know, in the early 50s, you know, there was the $800 toilet seats issue. And I, I think that it's paramount that we in city government do everything that we can to restore and rebuild public trust. And I, I can't vote yes because I don't have the information I need. I can't vote no because I don't have any information that says there's a reason to vote no. So for me, you know, it's a real conundrum.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I want to correct you, Chris. I did not say four sets of eyes, I said three.
Okay.
Now that you've made your political statement about the process of the city, I'm going to make a motion that we approve consent agenda item number B.
Second. We have a motion by Council President Cheatham and a second by Mansfield. Think he beat you? With that, Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham.
Yes.
Mansfield.
Yes.
Bray.
No.
Lurick.
Yes.
Ortega.
I'm not voting.
You don't have that option.
Sure I do.
No, you don't. You cannot abstain. You have been elected by the people to vote yes or no. You, you cannot abstain from a vote.
Show me the statute, Brian. Is there a statute, Jared?
You can't. You've been, you've been elected.
Jared, is there a statute? Jared, is there a statute?
I'm not going to jump into the middle until the mayor recognizes.
You've been elected by the people to do the business of the city. It is your responsibility to do so.
Well, I can't do the business of the city when I received this when I got here because I was working all day. So I can't vote either way. I'm not opposed to it, and I'm not in favor of it. So you don't have to like my position, but when I got elected, I didn't give up my civil rights. So unless Jared can read me a statute that says I must vote, I'm not gonna.
I don't know if there's a statute.
Then I'm not gonna.
You were elected, duly elected by the people in Pocatello to do the city business, and that's exactly what this is. Jared, is there a statute? I do know, before you answer that, I do know that there was a few years ago, a problem with councils throughout the state that decided, well, this is politically in, politically a hot button here, or politically a hot button there, so I'm just going to abstain. And so, there was a big to-do in the legislature about the responsibilities. I do not know if there was ever a statute created from that or not, but I do know the duly electeds are to vote for and do the work of the city in this meeting. With that, Jared, is there a statute or?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. There is not a particular statute on point. I'm familiar with the discussion that you're referring to. AIC's council has always been, unless there's a conflict of interest, council members should vote on every matter, but there is not a statute on point.
Okay.
Okay, so it's okay if she abstains?
There's not a legal remedy either.
Okay. All right. She doesn't want to do the business of the city. Go ahead.
No, 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 no. If you had given me the information.
This information is.
On a day other than the day of, I would have had a chance. But I was working today. I didn't have a chance to, I saw this when I got here, Brian. That's not enough time for me to look at it and make a decision. Sorry.
Stevens?
I'm also not able to vote.
Okay, the motion passes for, with the three, one, and two abstentions. With that, thank you, we'll move to agenda item four is proclamations.
No, I don't.
There are three yeses.
Three to one.
One no.
No, 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 but there's six of us here.
Abstentions don't count as votes.
They don't count either way.
No, they don't.
Okay. They don't count for, they don't count against.
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
The motion carried with three yes votes and one no vote, that's as if there's only four people here making up the quorum.
That's fine.
All right, thank you. We'll move to a proclamations now. Agenda item four is proclamations. We have five proclamations, so settle in. We've got, we've got one proclamation, National Therapy Animal Day will be read by Council Member Stevens. Child Abuse Prevention Month will be read by Council Member Bray. Arbor Day will be read by Council President Cheatham. Earth Day will be read by Linda Lurick, or Council Member Lurick, sorry. And Fair Housing Month will be read by Council Member Mansfield. Council Member Stevens.
And the caveat is that you can't leave at the end until I get to run out and pet the doggies.
They hate to be petted.
Oh, they hate to be petted. Well, welcome, welcome, welcome to furry buddies. Whereas there are thousands of Pet Partners Therapy Animal Teams serving in communities across the United States, and whereas Pet Partners has designated April 30 as National Therapy Animal Day, and whereas Pet Partners Therapy Animal Teams play an essential role in improving human health and well-being through the human-animal bond, and whereas Pet Partner Partners Therapy Animal Teams make millions of visits per year in settings such as hospitals, nursing homes, schools, and hospice, and whereas Pet Partners Therapy Animal Teams interact with a variety of people in our community, including veterans, seniors, patients, students, facing literacy challenges, and those approaching end of life, and whereas these exceptional therapy animals who partner with their human companions bring comfort and healing to those in need, now therefore, I, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim Saturday, April 30, 2022, to be National Therapy Animal Day in Pocatello, and encourage citizens to celebrate our therapy animals and their human handlers, and salute the service of therapy animal teams in our community and in communities across the nation.
Okay. I want to say, Chris, Councilmember Stevens is going to pet the dog.
Oh, no. No. Yes, can I keep you? No. I will say that, no. Okay, I understand. Mom says no, I would say, I would say. I will say, I will say that both dogs are rescued from our local animal shelter. Yes.
Yes. All right. Awesome. Thank you. Councilmember Lurick.
Oh, me?
Oh, is it Bray? Did I say Bray?
Yep.
I messed up here.
Okay. Whereas preventing child abuse and neglect is a community problem that depends on involvement among people throughout the community, and whereas child maltreatment occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and don't know how to cope, and whereas the majority of child abuse cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable in an engaged and supportive community, and whereas child abuse and neglect can be reduced by making sure each family has the support they need to raise their children in a healthy environment, and whereas child abuse and neglect not only directly harm children, but also increase the likelihood of criminal behavior, substance abuse, health problems such as heart disease and obesity, and risk behavior such as smoking, and whereas all citizens should become involved in supporting families and raising their children in a safe nurturing environment, and whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community, now therefore, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, does hereby proclaim April 2022 to be Child Abuse Prevention Month in Pocatello, and calls upon our citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in the efforts to support families, thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live.
Would you like to say something?
Yes. Okay. So do you, from this side, that side, how does?
All right. Speak to the council.
Perfect. And then is it okay to approach the council to hand out some pinwheels?
Speak if you want.
I've got a lot of stuff, too. I don't know if that's okay. I mean, if you wouldn't mind lending me a hand there. All right. Thank you for, oh, yes, please, for allowing me to come and speak with you today on behalf of the proclamation that was just read. My name is Shannon Fox. I am the Child Abuse and Trauma Prevention Program Manager at the Banach Youth Foundation. I manage Child Abuse Prevention Month through seven different counties here in eastern Idaho. I was actually just in Montpelier last night for the reading of their proclamation, and it's always been my joy to work with our local officials, our businesses, organizations, and our community members for Child Abuse Prevention Month. It's a nationally recognized month that highlights how important it is to take care of all community members, and child abuse is something that does impact every single person. I think sometimes we might have the perception that only impacts certain people in our community, and that's not the case. Anytime a child is harmed, anytime we have families that maybe don't have access to what they need, that is going to cause our city harm in an economic capacity, but also just in a human capacity. So for me, from my perspective, it's important to get as many people involved as possible. There are a number of ways to do that. The information that was just handed out to you all lists some of those ways. But I also want to welcome the public to go on to the Banach Youth Foundation Facebook page. We have Wear Blue Day tomorrow. I'm sporting a blue child abuse prevention shirt, and would love to challenge all of you to sport blue tomorrow as well. And then on April 9, we have a community event where anybody can come pick up pinwheels. We have other materials being handed out to community members from other nonprofits as well. So for my final statement, I'd just love to see more and more involvement here in our community for our community.
Thank you. Okay, we're messed up, so whoever the next go.
Whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 29, 2022, as Arbor Day, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Further, I urge all citizens to plant and care for trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations.
Drew, if you'd like to say a few words.
Hi, my name is Gary Bates. My name is Gary Bates. I'm the South Idaho Urban Forester. I work for the Idaho Community Forestry Program. Arbor Day, this is the 150th year that Arbor Day has been in existence and celebrated in our nation. There's a lot of things, I'm here today to present you the Tree City USA Award. Pocatello has been a Tree City USA for 25 years. This award is for activities that happened last year, but anyway, it was the 25th year. Trees, as was stated in the proclamation, there's a lot of benefits that trees offer to the community, and for, national studies show that for every dollar spent for tree planting and maintenance, they return to the city a dollar and 80 cents worth of benefit. What other, what other investment can you make that gives you an 80% return? There are four things that the city has to do to be a Tree City USA. They have to celebrate Arbor Day. They have to have a tree ordinance that administers for the care of the publicly owned trees. They have to spend $2 per capita for the care of those trees, and they have to either have a tree department or a tree committee. And you guys have a tree department. I mean, Brett Hewitt and his, and his guys are the, are the people that do that. You have had a tree committee, and I would encourage you to reestablish one, but that's up to the city. So on behalf of the Idaho Department of Lands, who I work for, and the Arbor Day Foundation, it's my pleasure to present the 25th Tree City USA Award to the City of Pocatello. We encourage you to continue to plant, care for, and plant trees.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So I'm going.
Is it you, Linda?
I think so.
Okay.
I hope I can get through this without having a coughing fit, but. Whereas a sound natural environment is the foundation of a healthy society and a robust economy, and whereas human activities around the world are causing climate change that threatens human health and our planet's ability to sustain a diverse community of life, and whereas the acknowledged, sorry, the knowledge of ways to live in harmony with our environment and methods and technologies to reduce our carbon footprint already exist, and whereas local communities can do much to slow down the effects of climate change and contribute to building a healthy society by addressing issues such as energy use, transportation, personal habits, and consumption, and whereas there are sound economic, environmental, and social reasons for local governments to initiate energy efficiency and renewable energy practices, and whereas the environmental realities of our time require humans to make a dramatic shift in their relationship to the earth, now therefore, I, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 22, 2022, to be Earth Day in Pocatello, and I encourage our residents, businesses, and institutions to make a commitment to undertake programs and projects that enhance our community's natural environment by reducing the city's carbon footprint and help build a sustainable community.
Are you Drew?
I'm Drew.
All right, we got it.
Absolutely.
You'd like to say a few words?
Yeah, I mean, I want to thank you guys for honoring that. I spent a lot of time, grew up here in town, and I spent a lot of time studying environmental stuff out everywhere else, and coming back to see the Porton River vision and all the stuff we've done to try to make this more sustainable place to live is, just filled my heart with a lot of joy, so I appreciate what you guys do and support in our work, and yeah, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Whereas April 2022 marks the 54th anniversary of the passage of Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, commonly known as the Federal Fair Housing Act, and whereas equal opportunity for all, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, or national origin, is a requirement by law and a fundamental goal of our nation, state, and city, and whereas equal access to housing is an important component of this goal, as fundamental as the right to equal education and employment, and whereas housing is a critical component of family and community health and stability, and whereas housing choice impacts our children's access to education, our ability to seek and retain employment options, the cultural benefits we enjoy, the extent of our exposure to crime and drugs, and the quality of healthcare we receive in emergencies, and whereas the laws of this nation, our state, and our city seek to ensure such equality of choice for all transactions involving housing, and whereas ongoing education and outreach promoted by the City of Pocatello through the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee and the Fair Housing Act resources at City Hall are key to raising awareness of fair housing principles, practices, rights, and responsibilities, and whereas only through continued cooperation, commitment, and support of all Pocatellans can barriers to fair housing be removed. Now therefore, I, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2022 to be Fair Housing Month in the City of Pocatello, and urge our citizens and businesses to increase their awareness of the Fair Housing Act as amended, so that all citizens will receive equal opportunities for housing in our community.
If you'd like to say something.
Sure. So hi, thank you. I'm Sarah Van Cleef. I'm the Executive Director of Housing Alliance and Community Partnerships, and I appreciate the efforts of this proclamation of acknowledging that April is Fair Housing Month, and to follow up on a promise I made back in October, we did, the Homeless and Housing Coalition did put together a landlord group, and I'm happy to announce that on April 27, we will have a fair housing resource fair for our landlords, providing resources about fair housing and other resources that are available for our landlords in Pocatello. So thank you.
Super. Thank you. All right, that might be a record of how many proclamations we've had. With that, we'll move to agenda item five, calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On April 14, 9:00 AM, will be a city council work session. April 21, all city council meetings have been canceled on this day. Upcoming events, annual spring cleanup for city cemeteries continues. Crews are removing and discarding all flowers and decorations. Citizens are asked to remove decorations, et cetera. They have placed on cemetery spaces if they wish to avoid disposal of the items by staff. Cleanup is expected to continue through the end of April. Compost happens. April 1 through the last week of November, yard waste carts will be picked up on the same day as your regular collection day. April 2, Zoo Idaho will open for weekends only. Beginning May 1, the zoo will be open every day. April 16, Environmental Fair at Caldwell Park, 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Citizens using any PRT fixed route or special services during the Environmental Fair hours will ride for free to and from Caldwell Park. April 16, Medicine Takeback Day, part of the Environmental Fair. Law enforcement agencies will take back and safely dispose of unwanted medicines to keep them out of our water supply. Please remember, in accordance with President Biden's executive order, all individuals must wear face coverings while at Pocatello Regional Airport and on Pocatello Regional We will move to agenda item six is a public hearing. Public hearing, Apex Road Rightof Way Vacation. This time's been set aside for the council to hear comments from the public regarding a request by Thomas J. Katzlemides for the vacation of a portion of the right of way located within Apex Road. I declare the public hearing open. Counsel, has there been any expertise communication? Okay. With that then, Mr. Katzlemides.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Tom Katzlemides. Thank you, council members, for being here, staff, and audience, and neighbors. My name, the application you have before you is to vacate a portion of Apex Road, which is a remnant of a 100-foot-wide right-of-way that was planned back during the interstate highway system proposals way back in the 1950s. The former owner of the property, Mr. Harry Thurston, granted a right-of-way to the City of Pocatello in about 1971. There was a recorded deed. The Apex Road was never platted. There was never a plat of that layout of that road. It was partially vacated on three prior occasions by this council and the city, and we're just now trying to vacate the last remnant of the 100-foot-wide and preserve a 60-foot-wide right-of-way that matches the public road that's paved at the beginning of Apex Road or intersects Center Street. So. So total land area to be vacated is .323, not quite a third of an acre. There's a diagram here that's included in the packet. The north boundary has a length on the curvature of 362 feet. South portion, 341 feet. You'll see at the terminus, on the eastern end, it's 40 feet wide. And with the slope angle on the western end, almost 41. So I'll stand for questions for council or anyone else.
Any questions for Mr. Katsalamidis while he's here? We'll give you an opportunity at the end if there are any questions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. With that, staff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Carl Anderson. I'm a senior planner with the City of Pocatello Planning Department. You have before you tonight, as previously stated, a petition submitted by Thomas J. Katsalamidis requesting to vacate the public's interest in a portion of Apex Road. The petitioner's desires of vacating the north 40 feet of Apex, extending approximately 362 feet to the east. The existing right-of-way is 100 feet in width, and the vacation of the north 40 feet will leave intact a 60-foot-wide section of right-of-way. Approximately 175 feet of Apex Road is developed, as shown on the Tuscany Heights subdivision, and is a 60-foot right-of-way. The remaining portion of Apex is unplatted and is undeveloped, and there do not appear to be public utilities located within the unplatted portion of the right-of-way. All noticing requirements have been met, and no written public comment has been received. Staff has reviewed the application and recommends approval of the request to vacate the subject right-of-way. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Any questions for Carl? Okay, Madam Clerk, have we received any correspondence in your office? Okay, thank you. Then with that, we would look for any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application? Any testimony opposed to the application?
I just have questions.
Yeah, I just have questions too. I don't have any position. I guess I'm uncommitted.
So let's back up to uncommitted then. So it sounds to me like you are uncommitted, so if you would step up here and ask your questions, and Tom and Carl, if you would.
My name is.
If you would write down the questions and stuff, you might be able to answer them pretty easy.
Okay, my name is Paul Entrican. I live at 3550 East Center Street, and I got one of the letters about the petition here. I guess my question is, is this a precursor to development of something along Apex Road? Are they going to build houses there or apartments? If it is, that makes further questions for me. But in particular, I just want to say that as they start constructions, it may not look like it, but there are a lot of little children who live up in that area. I have four that live with me in my house. And they're just now getting their scooters and bikes out. So we're going to have to, I would like to know that they're going to be very conscious about this kind of stuff when they're doing lots of construction. The other question I have, that's kind of a safety issue. The other thing I'd say is if it is something that's going to be a precursor to development, you need to know that there's not any water pressure up there on top of that hill already, right? So if they're going to have more demands on the water, something's going to have to be done, I guess. Because there's just no pressure up there anyhow. My house has got, I mean, it looks like the inside of a U-boat. They've got so many valves and tanks and everything in there to get the pressure up, you know? I mean, it's impressive. But I'm saying that the water situation is not real strong pressure up there. And the next thing I had is that they've been building a house just across the street and up the road from where we are. And already, there's wind-blown debris all over the place. I mean, not just pieces of paper, we're talking pieces of siding. If we get a breeze down here, we're getting a gale up there, okay? The whole porta potty blew out in the middle of the street with just the one house up there, okay? So whoever's thinking, the construction needs to be aware that this is, this is a lot of wind up here, and the blown debris goes everywhere. And I don't know, that's really all I have to say, is mostly more questions and just concerned about all the little kids up there with all the big trucks.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Another uncommitted.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, City Council Members, my name is Todd Argle. I actually live on 3520 East Center Street, so I'm on the corner right where Apex Road is. And I bought the property on the corner, and some of that land I've benefited from the vacations that happened on a number of parcels already. So quite frankly, I don't have any issues with development, other than what Paul said. I'm on the corner, I have kids, and, you know, I welcome development. I think it's important for our community to have, you know, to grow and to have opportunities like this. So I'm really not overly concerned about development. I'm just personally want to make sure, because when I was served, I can't make sense of these coordinates, you know? This is a very technical paper you're served with that I have no idea. To me, it looked like it was going to be a privatization of the road in front of my house. And I was like, what does this all mean? So I just want to ensure that none of my property is at risk as it pertains to this vacation. So I'd very much appreciate, the planner actually had a diagram at the end of his report, and I'm assuming that he could pinpoint exactly for me where that would start, and I could just be assured that it wasn't any of my property that was at risk.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, super. Anyone else that have questions or otherwise uncommitted? We've already established that there's nobody opposed to it. So Mr. Katsalamidis, we're going to give you an opportunity to come up and, it says rebuttal, but I don't think there's a rebuttal here, but if you would, Tom, if you would, Tom, if you'd explain to the audience what you and Paul are talking about, that would be fantastic.
Yeah, I was just pointing out that part of the publicly available staff report includes an email address and a phone number, and both neighbors are welcome to call me or email me at any time, and I'd be glad to answer questions. To answer the first question, I have no plan currently for the development of that property, so no plans. Second question, I did speak to the neighbor on the corner just before the start of the meeting, and I realize that the diagrams and so forth are a little bit hard to read, but it is only the portion that abuts that neighbor's property going to the east. It does not affect anything in the public right-of-way where the road is paved or beyond where the road is paved for the first, I don't know, so many feet, it looks like about, oh, about 80 feet or so. So it should not affect that. We're not vacating anything other than there.
Okay.
So it won't affect this gentleman's property?
Well, it does abut his, the part we're trying to vacate, the 40-foot-wide strip out of the 100, the north boundary. It abuts the portion to be vacated on the western edge, abuts his property. And that was a prior vacation that was done by the previous owner that sold to him.
Right.
So it butts up to it, but it does not take property from him?
No, no, not at all.
What Todd has now, he has tomorrow.
Yes, yes.
And there's still that stretch of Apex Road that will remain public right-of-way?
Yes.
It's just narrowing slightly, but the paved area is still all public access.
Okay, fantastic. Did, I'm hoping that your questions got answered.
Yeah.
If they did not, Paul, you might just grab Tom, he's right there, instead of emailing him and talk to him after we're done with this public hearing. You might just grab him and talk to him in the foyer there and just make sure everything's covered there. Are you satisfied at this point, though, so far?
Yes.
It sounds like, you were nodding your head yes, and so I'm assuming, I'm assuming that you're okay. So with that, I am going to, I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, this item is before you. How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the right-of-way vacation of Apex Road as written and per the recommendation of staff.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ortega and a second by Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Ortega?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. And yeah, Paul, if you have any other questions, I know that Mr. Katsalamidis is pretty reasonable. You can definitely grab him and go from there. Thank you. Then we will move to Agenda Item 7 is a public hearing, proposed fiscal year 2022 sanitation fee amendment. This time has been set aside for the council to hear comments from the public regarding proposed mid-year fee change, amending Exhibit S sanitation department fees of the city's fee schedule for sanitation services for fiscal year 2022. I declare the public hearing open.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tom Kirkman, Deputy Public Works Director for the City of Pocatello. Tonight, we are proposing a fiscal year 22 amendment to the fee resolution or fee schedule for sanitation. During the budget process, when we approved our fee schedules, the Bannock County landfill had not yet determined what their rate was going to be. After our fees were approved, then we got word that the costs had gone up. And so we just want to clean up the language in the fee schedule so that it represents that. Where it's more of a county fee than really a city fee, we're kind of just going through kind of a bypass-type deal. We want to just make that language to represent that it will be based on the county's current fee instead of a number. So with that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
What's the effective date?
The effective date? As soon as the council passes the resolution.
Okay.
Any other questions? Tom, before you leave, your staff, so I won't ask for that, have you received any correspondence in your office?
We have not.
We have not seen Madam Clerk? Have you received any in your office?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, Tom?
Oh, Tom, we have a question.
Sorry, sorry. Would it be possible, and I know this isn't up to you, but I've gotten a couple of calls about this, and I've talked with you, and I think it would be really valuable to have something in the mayor's newsletter that explains that this is a pass-through of a county fee hike, because it's not clear to people. And the complaints that I'm getting is, you know, what is that darn city sanitation department doing? They're always raising our rates just because they feel like it, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm just wondering if you might be willing to be an advocate for getting an informational piece that could, you know, go out with the next bill or a bill soon or something like that.
I can speak with the mayor about that, yeah.
Thank you.
Just to clarify this, we have a five-year rate study that we establish our rates upon. Those rates do take into consideration these kind of escalations that may happen. So we feel confident for all residential customers and most commercial customers, this isn't going to change anything for them at all, so.
Right. That'd be great to clarify, because like I say, my phone's been blowing up with that darn sanitation department.
Okay.
Thank you. And we would look for any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application? Any testimony opposed to the application? Okay, then, Tom, I know how much you like to talk in public. I'm going to go ahead and skip you, though, this time, sorry. With that, I declare the public hearing closed. We will move to Agenda Item 8. Treatment Plant System Capacity Fee Waiver Request, Project New Day. Council may wish to consider a request from Caden Beistain Excel Engineering LLC to waive a treatment plant system capacity fee in the amount of $2,250. For Project New Day, property, building supplies, and labor have been donated to construct a home for Malia Gallo, whose husband passed away in 2019 in a construction accident.
I move that we do not grant the fee waiver request, because while I have a lot of empathy and sympathy for this woman's tragedy, we've had a lot of people come before us in the last two years with tragic circumstances, asking us to waive their reconnection fee on water because their water was turned off because they couldn't pay their bill on time and things like that. And we have not, we didn't waive any of those for any of those people. And I have a hard time picking one person's tragedy and saying that it's more than someone else's. And so I move that we do not grant the waiver.
It's my understanding that this is actually, would be granting Chubbuck essentially a waiver, because Chubbuck granted the waiver to this person and to the requister. And this is sort of a pass-through from Chubbuck to us. So if Chubbuck chooses to waive the fee, then they can directly waive her fee and, I mean, am I understanding that right?
Levi, you want to come up and explain?
We don't have a second, do we?
No, we don't actually have a second yet, so maybe wait for a second there before you.
All right, I'll second it so we can get some discussion.
Okay, so we have a second by Stevens, okay.
Levi Adams, the WPC Superintendent. We don't charge directly homes being built in Chubbuck or their connection fees. All of those fees are connected by the City of Chubbuck, which then they reimburse back to the City of Pocatello for those connection fees. So we have no control if Chubbuck waives those fees or not. And like I said, and if we decide to waive the fees, then it's just, Chubbuck doesn't pay us for that particular connection.
Are you aware, do they have a set of criteria by which they evaluate such requests? I mean, what do we know about how they arrive at these decisions, anything?
I personally know nothing about that situation.
So Levi, you, this may, you may not know exactly, it says that we are able to get the City of Chubbuck fees waived? Are they referring to the same connection fee that the City of Chubbuck would normally charge them? Do you?
I would assume so. It's my assumption, but I can't say for sure. I wasn't involved in Chubbuck's waiving of the fees, so.
That, yes?
So Chubbuck waived the fees already, so that's, like you said, this would then just be Chubbuck not paying us.
Not paying us what they owe us.
For, yeah, a normal situation.
Any other questions for Levi?
Have we, how many, how many give or take of these sort of hardship fee waivers have we done, either for Pocatello residents or for Chubbuck residents, in as far as you can remember?
As far as I know, there haven't been either. I know for sure there's been none since I've been superintendent.
Okay, and that's how many years, just give or take?
Years.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Have there been requests?
Not that I'm aware of. I personally have not had any requests.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Years ago, we used to have a select fund that the council administered. And that fund would take care of things like this. But we had so many people wanting to get those select funds that the council as a whole did away with those, that whole line item, because we had people down here asking us all the time, and council was having to weigh one person against another person, on and on and on it went. And for that reason, we've not, it's been several years since we had select funds to distribute. And this is, in my estimation, an end around that process of select funds. Because we, the council has designated more generously with the budget, some helping agencies. And I think the rationale was that in helping agencies, you're helping more people than just a few. And I think that's the whole nexus of what's coming up here, is that some people don't understand that Pocatello may run its city different than Chubbuck, and we have that precedent to uphold.
Mr. Mayor, was there any, does anybody know if there was? Mr. Mayor, was there any, does anybody know if there was any precedent put in place that Chubak will waive this fee if Pocatello waives this fee? If we turn this down, will it then fall back on Chubak? Or have they put a gotcha in the middle of this? Anybody know?
Haven't they already done it?
We've got, we've got the applicant or the, well, I'm not exactly sure your relationship. You are at the Chubak meeting, I'm assuming. Would you please come up here and state your name and...
So, my name, thank you. I appreciate you letting me speak. My name is Katie Bastian. I'm the one that started this project pre-COVID. The email that I sent, the information you have is not as much as I have here to present. And so, I can give you more detail. The situation with Chubak is when we started this two years ago, they saw our vision and our passion, and so they waived their fees and their permits. They can't waive these fees, and so they would just have to be paid. So, they're not in connection with the fees that they waived. And if you have the time, I can tell you the story and give you more explanation, then you can ask questions if it's okay.
Well, what questions do you have in particular to...
I'm just so uncomfortable because I don't know how to make one person more important than other people. And this is, this isn't like a standard process like select fees or something or select fund. And so, I just, I have no idea how to say, this person's tragedy that moves my heart is more worthy based on, I don't know what, than this person's. I just, I can't, I mean, I have no basis on which, on which to make a judgment.
Ultimately, I can't make that decision for you. What I can say is it would be in your consideration, it would be just like, say, a scholarship or a grant that somebody might be offered for assistance, for efforts or situations. And again, it's your subject, your thought.
The difference is, because I've sat on many, many panels for grants and scholarships, the difference is that everyone seeking funding applies at the same time. They're all judged according to a specific set of designated benchmarks. So, it's, for me, it's very different. And you're comparing that limited pool which chose to apply to itself. And here, what about the people who, they didn't have an advocate like you, and it didn't occur to them that they should try this, you know, creative process? And so, I'm just, I'm just, that's my dilemma, not worthiness or empathy or any of it. It's that to reach a judgment, I need some criteria that help me assess.
So, which, what criteria would that be that would help you?
I mean, I, I don't, I can't just tell you off the top of my head. I'd have to think about that for a while.
Councilwoman Lurick?
I would just like some clarification. I'm a little confused by what you said a moment ago. You said something about Chubak waived those fees, and now we need to waive these fees. And I thought what Chubak already waived was the same thing, but the question would then be, according to Levi Adams, is that Chubak waived it, but that would mean if we don't waive it, Chubak has to still pay us. If we do waive it, then they don't pay us, is my understanding, so.
They did not waive the Pocatello fees. They only waived the fees that go through Chubak. And so, those fees, the Pocatello fees, will have to just be paid by somebody, either Mila or anybody that's assisting in this project. So, we will still, as far as I understand, the Pocatello fees, if they're not waived, that go through Chubak, we will just still have to pay Chubak for those.
I don't understand what, and maybe, Levi, you could clarify this, I don't understand what the Pocatello fees are. They live in Chubak.
It's a capacity fee for them to send their affluent to our facility. So, the capacity fee that we have, as I understand it, and Levi might be able to explain it a little bit better, but as I understand it, that when you build a house in Chubak, you pay Chubak all of those fees, and then the City of Pocatello sends a bill to Chubak for the houses that are connecting to the system to reimburse them or to pay for their buy-in onto, into the system.
Right.
And so, and so, as I understand this, when the, when Chubak, when Chubak charges the fees, they charge that capacity fee. They did not waive that capacity fee from the City of Pocatello. They waived Chubak's, Chubak's fees. We would still send a bill to Chubak to, and Chubak would then pay the City of Pocatello, as I understand it.
Yes, so Chubak could still choose to waive this part.
No, this is fee they cannot waive.
I mean, they could waive, no, I'm saying they could waive it for the person.
Oh, for sure.
But they still would have to pay us.
They would still pay us, yes.
So, that's what I'm trying to get clear on, so.
Levi, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, that makes more sense to me. So, if our decision is to not waive it, Chubak still has the ability to waive it to the homeowner, but they would then have to pay us.
They would still be on, they would be the one who's on the line for it.
Uh, Councilmember Bray?
This question's for Jared. We went through a lot of litigation with capacity fees and everything else, and we have really held to a standard of making that sacred to never go there on capacity fees. Would we be changing our precedent and making it softer? And if we were challenged again on capacity fees, would that...
You ready to grant this waiver?
Yeah.
We settled the lawsuit, but I don't, I don't know, I'm not sure what standard you're referring to. We have a fee schedule, and we abide by that fee schedule very stringently, but you, as council, certainly have the right to waive fees as a part of that fee schedule.
I thought that the capacity fees were untouchable because once you set a capacity fee and you rescind any of it, you've, in effect, eroded your standard for your capacity fee, even if it's minimal.
Well, if you were to be constantly adjusting your capacity fee without a basis for doing so, citywide or system-wide, yeah, that would be problematic, but it's certainly within your purview to waive a particular capacity fee or a particular, or adjust your fees with a basis for doing so.
I just feel like it's going to be setting a...
Okay, thank you.
...dicey precedent.
Okay, council, any other discussion? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to deny this request by Ortega and a second by Stevens. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Ortega?
So, just to clarify, if I'm voting yes, I'm voting to deny.
Yes.
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And so, what will happen is there's no guarantees that Chubak will pay it, but right now, they've waived the fees, and so, that motion passes, and so, the, Chubak will be sent a bill for this, and they may choose to pay that or not. Thank you. Agenda Item 9, we'll move to Agenda Item 9. Idaho Nursery and Landscape Association, INLA, grant application ratification, science and environment. Council may wish to approve ratification of a grant application to Idaho Nursery and Landscaping Association, INLA, in the amount of $300, subject to legal department review. If awarded, council may wish to authorize acceptance of the grant and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents related to the grant, subject to legal department review. Grant funds will be used to plant a tree at Caldwell Park. The grant requires a 25% match, $75, which will be funded through in-kind donations.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Councilwoman Lurick?
I move that we approve ratification of a grant application from the Science and Environment Department to Idaho Nursery and Landscaping Association, as outlined in Agenda Item Number 9, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents related to the grant, subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Ortega. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 10, IFT grant application ratification, Clark Street Ponds Beautification Project. Council may wish to approve ratification of an IFT fund Idaho Community Foundation grant application in the amount of $10,000, subject to legal department review. If awarded, council may wish to authorize acceptance of the grant and authorize the mayor's signature on pertinent documents related to the grant, subject to legal department review. Grant funds will be used to fund improvements to the Clark Street Ponds, as presented by the Portent Valley Partners at the March 10, 2020, 2022 work session. There were no, there is no city match required. Councilmember Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the application for the IFT grant in the amount of $10,000, subject to legal department review. And if awarded, we authorize the acceptance of the grant by the city under the mayor's authorization signature.
Second.
That's with legal department review, or did you say that?
I have a question for Justin before we...
Okay, and we have a question for...
Justin, I have a question for you. Is this, any of this work, have you had a chance to look at any of this and...
Justin's water, he wouldn't...
I know, I just want to make sure that none of this work is going to affect our drinking water in any way. Like, there's no clean water lines or anything that could be damaged. I didn't think to ask that when we talked about it last time.
Yeah, Justin Armstrong, City of Pocatello, Water Superintendent. So, at this location, there's no particular, there's no wells within the surrounding vicinity that would be impacted.
Okay, I just wanted to ask that question, just want to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Sorry, Merrill.
So, we have a motion by Bray and a second by Cheetum.
Cheetum? Bray?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 11, Memorandum of Understanding MOU Police and Fire Unions. Council may wish to consider the following. A, approve and authorize the mayor to sign an MOU amending the collective bargaining agreement for the term of October 1, 2021, to September 30, 2025, with the Fraternal Order of Police, Portent Valley Fraternal Order of Police, Local Number 13, modifying Article 7, Section 15, Article 10, Section 2, Article 11, Section 1, and Article 13, Section 1. And B, approve and authorize the mayor to sign an MOU amending the collective bargaining agreement for the term of October 1, 2021, through September 30, 2024, with the Firefighters' Local Union Number 187, an affiliate of the International Association of Firefighters, AFL-CIO, modifying Articles 14 and Article 16, Section A.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve and authorize the mayor to sign an MOU with the police department and an MOU with, sorry, the police union and the MOU with the fire union, as detailed in Items A and B of Agenda Item Number 11.
Second.
We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Stevens. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 12, bid acceptance for ADA curb ramp installation services, Street Operations Department. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and award the bid for ADA curb ramp installation services to M&amp;S Development and Construction LLC as part of the Street Operations Department 2022 pavement maintenance program, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents related to the project, subject to legal department review. Funds for the project are available in the Street Operations, the Street Operations Fiscal Year 2022 budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we adopt, accept Agenda Item 12 as written, pending all pertinent legal review and signatures.
Second.
We have a motion by Stevens and a second by Mansfield. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Stevens?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Thank you.
Agenda Item 13, piggyback bid acceptance and contract for micro-surfacing services, Street Operations Department. Council may wish to consider piggyback bidding, consider piggyback, piggybacking the 2019 City of Pocatello contract with Valley Slurry Seal in the approximate amount of $670,000 for 2022 micro-surfacing services, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents related to the project, subject to legal department review. Funds for the project have been budgeted for this, budgeted for in the Street Operations Fiscal Year 2022 budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Council President, Cheetum?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of the piggyback bid acceptance and contract for micro-surfacing through the Street Operations Department, authorizing your signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheetum and a second by Lurick.
Mr. Mayor, before we vote, I got to tell you, I had questions about Agenda Item 13 and 14. I went out and talked to Tom. I now know more about road surfacing and paving than I ever dreamed was possible.
Or I ever wanted to.
He's passionate about it. You ask him a question, you're going to hear the whole story.
It was amazing.
He's an asphalt genius.
Good. We have a motion by Council President, Cheetum, and a second by Lurick. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheetum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 14, bid acceptance and purchase of asphalt and related materials, Street Operations. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and award the bid for asphalt and related materials to Mickelson Construction Incorporated in the amount of $433,300, as part of the Street Operations Department 2022 pavement maintenance program. Funding for the materials have been budgeted in the Street Operations Fiscal Year 2022 budget. Council may also wish to authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents related to the purchase.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Councilmember Bray, go ahead.
I move that we approve the bid acceptance and purchase of asphalt, asphalt related to Street Operations from Mickelson.
Second.
I was waiting for with all, with signatures and legal...
It doesn't have it in there.
So...
With the legal department review and the words.
It doesn't have it in there.
Yeah, it does.
Anyway, second.
But, but that's what he meant. And that's, they're not going to let me sign anything without their review, anyway, if you say it or not.
Agreed, agreed.
So, with that, we have a motion by Bray and a second by Stevens. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 15, bid acceptance and contract for construction manager, general contractor for fuel site project, Street Operations Department. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and accept the bid for construction manager, general contractor for the fuel site project to Construction Services Incorporated, and authorize the mayor's signature on all appropriate documents related to the project, subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Councilmember, Council President, Cheetum?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 16, Pocatello Creek Booster Station Change Order Number 1, Water Department. Council may wish to approve the recommendations of staff and authorize the mayor to approve Change Order Number 1 of the Pocatello Creek Booster Station Project, increasing the contract amount for, by $135,233.10, subject to legal department review. The change order is due to material unavailability from the initial bid and the project, project engineers recommend to switch to a suitable substitute material class for the 42-inch case piping for directional drilling under the I-15 corridor. Funds are available in the Water Department Capital Reserve Funds.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move that we approve Change Order Number 1 and Agenda Item 16 as outlined and authorize the mayor to sign said change order, subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Lurick. She snuck in there. I think Bray was gonna do it, but... Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 17, resolution amending Exhibit S sanitation department fees. Council may wish to adopt a resolution amending Exhibit S sanitation department fees of the city's fee schedule for sanitation services for fiscal year 2022.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we adopt the resolution amending Exhibit S of the sanitation department fees of the city's fee schedule for fiscal year 22.
Second.
We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Stevens. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 18, uh, 18A, an ordinance annexing approximately 45.91 acres of land to extend, to extend the Pocatello city limits, south of Venture Way and west of Portonah Wellness Complex. The annex, annex property will be zoned office park, OP, or residential, commercial, professional, RCP.
Mr. Mayor?
Council, how do you wish this to be, ordinance to be read?
Mr. Mayor, I move the ordinance, Agenda Item Number 18A, yeah, 18A, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Council President Cheetum and a second by Mansfield. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheetum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Jared, could you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, annexing and zoning approximately 45.91 acres of land located east of I-15, south of Venture Way and west of the Portonah Wellness Complex. Said property more particularly described in Exhibit A of this ordinance, providing for the city clerk to file a certified copy of this ordinance with the Idaho State Tax Commission and with the Bannock County Auditor Treasurer and Assessor in accordance with Idaho Code Sections 50-223 and 63-2215, providing for said land to be zoned office park, OP, and residential, commercial, professional, RCP, and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication, according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Forty seconds?
Sorry.
You know it's getting time. Change it up here.
You might have, yeah, time us. Wendy?
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 18B, an ordinance annexing approximately 18.74 acres of land to extend this Pocatello city limits north of Vista Drive. The annexed property will be zoned residential, medium-density, single-family, RMS, with a comprehensive plan, land use designation of residential. All right, Council, how do you wish this ordinance to be read? Councilman Bray?
I move the ordinance, Agenda Item Number 18B, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Mansfield. Wendy, could you, or no, 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 don't call the roll yet. No, yeah, Wendy, call the roll.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Jared, would you please read the ordinance?
Okay, so the problem was I didn't say ready, go last time.
Nobody shot the starting gun.
And normally I say, ready, go.
Okay.
All right, ready? Go.
An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, annexing and zoning approximately 18.74 acres of land located north of Vista Drive. Said property more particularly described in the attached Exhibit A of this ordinance, providing for the city clerk to file a certified copy of this ordinance with the Idaho State Tax Commission and with the Bannock County Auditor Treasurer and Assessor in accordance with Idaho Code Sections 50-223 and 63-2215, providing for said land to be zoned residential, medium-density, single-family, RMS with a concurrent comprehensive plan map use... That's not fair. ...designation of residential, R, and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication, according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Thirty-three.
Why you stopped and you made a joke in the middle?
There's no language in this one. Sorry, council.
Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 18C, an ordinance amending the zoning designation for the property located at 600 Jefferson Avenue from residential, medium-density, single-family, RMS to residential, commercial, professional. Council, how do you wish this to be, ordinance to be read?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Bray?
I move that ordinance, Agenda Item Number 18B, be read on, only...
C.
Oh, 18C, be read only by title and placed by final passage for publication and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Stevens. And just so you know, I heard C. Everybody else showed Bray B.
You harassed me about messing it up.
I know. Wendy, would you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Jared, would you please? I'm bowing out of the speed competition.
You can't.
I think focus on feeling.
Would you please read the ordinance?
I'd be happy to.
However you would like to.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. The City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, rezoning property located at 600 Jefferson Avenue, Pocatello, Idaho, from zoning designation residential, medium-density, single-family, RMS to residential, commercial, professional, RCP. Said property being more particularly described on the attached Exhibit A, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict here with and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication, according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass? What did you say?
It's giving me the time.
Wendy, he kept timing. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
He could have made that really fast.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 18D, an ordinance amending Pocatello Municipal Code Title 8, Health and Safety, and more specifically, Chapter 8.14.110, Penalties, to specific, to to specify criminal penalties for violations of this code.
Mr. Mayor?
Council? Yes. How do you want to read it?
I move the ordinance, Agenda Item 18D, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheetum and a second by Mansfield. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheetum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Jared, could you please read the ordinance?
If you don't do it fast, it sucks all the fun out of it.
Okay, and this one is short, so...
All right, ready?
I'm back in.
Ready, go.
Hang on, hang on.
Come on. You know, ordinance is supposed to be a serious thing. Okay, thanks. Okay, can I get a restart?
Yes. Ready, go.
An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, amending Title 8, Health and Safety of the revised and compiled ordinances of the City of Pocatello, more particularly amending Chapter 8.14.110, Penalties, to specify criminal penalties for violations, and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication, according to law.
Fourteen seconds.
It was the back rub.
Pete might have pitched me up, actually.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's so much more fun that way.
That's why I'm here.
Agenda item 19 is items from the audience. This time has been set aside to hear items, to hear items from the audience, not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there's a three-minute time limit per person and 15 minutes for this agenda item. I will go ahead and get started. Phil Coleman.
Mayor Blad, council members, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Phil Coleman. I live at 2366 Legacy Drive in Pocatello. I've been playing pickleball four or five days a week since I retired four years ago, here in Pocatello. And a wonderful game. Anyway, we play year-round. We play at the Mountain View Event Center, Monday through Friday, give or take Thursday and Fridays if they have events. We don't play, can't play there, or the bottom of the totem pole, per se, there. And and then summertimes, we enjoy playing at Raymond Park. That's the only pickleball courts in Pocatello. There's one pickleball court in Chubbuck at Mary's Park. But as far as Pocatello, we only have four courts, and they're actually combination courts with tennis courts. So you've got both set of lines on those courts. But I'm not here to argue for designated pickleball courts. I'm here to ask... I'm sorry, I got off track here. Anyway, I'm part of the Portonah Valley Pickleball Association. We're a nonprofit that we started two and a half years ago. We have 50, between 50 and 100 members. I'm not the president, so I can't give you the exact number, but I can get it if you're interested. Anyway, the condition of the tennis and pickleball courts at Raymond Park has deteriorate, deteriorated dramatically due to lack of maintenance in the last three years. We've been working with John Banks at Parks and Rec Department for the last two years. He's been very helpful trying to get grants to pay to have the courts resurfaced. And, uh, but to no avail. We didn't get the grants last year, and he's in the process of trying to get some grants this year. Last year, we made a, I was part of a presentation we made as Pickleball Association, Two Parks and Rec. We made a visual presentation of all the parks in the southeast Idaho, from Idaho Falls to Lava, Jerome, Burley, and Twin Falls, all have brand-new, beautiful pickleball courts. Anyway, the Parks and Rec Board members liked the idea of building courts. They forwarded it to city council. We didn't, it went nowhere, obviously. Anyway, I'm here tonight. After last year and our lack of success, I'm here tonight with my personal thoughts for why...
Phil?
Yes, sir.
Your time is up. Thank you. Will you grab, let me grab you right afterwards and we'll, I'll visit with you. I think we just did a pickleball court...
I was just gonna say, didn't we just do something?
Yeah, we approved, it was like a $10,000 grant to convert tennis courts into six pickleball courts.
Can I just convey some info to everybody? So today at noon, we had the Parks and Rec Advisory Board met. This was an agenda item. There was a fair amount of discussion, presentation by the the local tennis group and the pickleball people. And the, I mean, it was a good discussion. The vice chair felt that there was no action that could be taken, you know, because John has some new thoughts on the situation. And it will be on the next agenda for further discussion, so...
The next Parks and Recreation Board agenda.
Right. So so it it is alive and well in a new iteration that is actually larger than just Raymond Park.
So, and I believe that we did, Madam Clerk, we did, it was on, in front of the council for a grant to, at Raymond Park for four pickleball courts.
To transform those.